Call, uh.
Town council meeting December ninth, two thousand twenty-five to order. If you will join and say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. If you'll continue standing while we say the invocation, we have Father Gardner from Church of the Redeemer. Over here, right here.
Let's pray. Gracious Lord, we thank you for the city of Hilton Head Island, the communities that are served and the gifts of service you have given our mayor, the city manager, city staff, and city council members. I give thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. I pray for this council meeting tonight, give them wisdom and guidance as delivering on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. As they gather, we ask for your presence and guidance, filling us with wisdom, humility, and a spirit of unity. Help us build us and with open hearts, make decisions that serve the common good, and approach our responsibilities with integrity and justice. May our deliberations today reflect your love and benefit of all of our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Mr. Orlando, do we have any changes to this evening's agenda?
No, sir.
With that, do I have an emotion to accept the agenda as written?
A move.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved, seven, zero. Next, we have the regular meeting minutes of November fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
A move.
As a first, is there a second?
Second. Hey, I need to abstain. I wasn't at that meeting. It was a way in the family issue.
Okay, so any discussion other than that? So all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved, six, zero.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. I don't think Ms. Becker's microphone is.
Ms. Becker abstained since she was not here.
Okay.
Okay, presentations, recognitions. We'll hear from our town manager, uh, town manager's report, Mr. Orlando.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, members of the community. I've, I've got a bunch, so, so bear with me for a few minutes. Um, lot of, lot of good news to share, a lot of good updates. So the Taylor Family Park groundbreaking was held yesterday morning. Um, I think it was a great turnout, a great event. Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, the McKnight family, the Taylor family, town staff, and our project team. Um, and we expect to have a ribbon cutting in the fall of twenty twenty-six, uh, for, for that space. In that same manner, I'm pleased to share some, several, uh, capital project updates. So the Coligny Pocket Park, you may have driven by, it's on schedule for completion this spring, so, so project is on track. The paving work on Mitchellville Road, a long time coming, but the paving work on Mitchellville Road has temporarily closed. The asphalt plant, which typically closes down near the end of the year, closed down early this year, and they will reopen, um, mid to late January. Paving will begin right after that. We've, we've put a press release out, we let the area residents know, um, some project signage as well. And once we're back in business, um, the residents, uh, will be notified first and foremost, so I'm, I'm keeping you abreast of that. We started the removal. I'm not sure if they're all down yet, but I know that we're starting the removal of the dilapidated structures, call them what you will. There's three structures on the Jonesville Barn and Paddock site. Three structures, um, we're, we're removing two of them. The equestrian partner, the operating partner on the equestrian, um, space, the RFQ qualification is out for bid and will come back soon. Pickleball courts at Old Schoolhouse Park are closed to the public. Messages have been released. Um, the work performed is concurrent for the pickleball courts, as well as a new restroom, and some accessibility improvements that are underway. And the courts will remain closed until everything is back in business in February, when we anticipate the, the construction to be complete. Windmill Harbor traffic signal was successfully integrated into the town's adaptive signal system a few weeks ago. It's working in coordination with the downstream signals and intersections along the rest of our island, so great news and, uh, on that, and, and thank you to the team to take that out of the county's network and put it into the towns. Beach Renourishment, Fish Hall Beach Park, Pine Island and Port Royal, the heel, as we call it, um, from our sand project, um, is complete. Placement along sand, along the central section, will begin as early as the end of this week, really in and around the Singleton Beach area. Uh, we are still releasing weekly messages, and again, great, great teamwork, great project team. Uh, just an FYI, a portion of the parking lot at Islanders remains closed for, um, to stage pipes and equipment by our contractors, and the project is still on schedule to, to be complete by the end of May of twenty twenty-six. As we know, uh, we recently closed on nineteen million dollar beach renourishment bond. Um, that closed on December third, and those funds combined with some beach preservation fee cash set aside are used to complete this forty-seven, uh, million dollar beach renourishment project. So, couple more. The Gulligichi Historic Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Historic Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, wrapped up its Money Talk Seminar Series. There was a mini expo and a special session on how to do business with Hilton Head Island. So local businesses, entrepreneurs engage with some one-on-one conversations um, about contracting and procurement opportunities with, with the town. So, great news about that. SC Commission for Minority Affairs also, um, was onsite and sharing information on how to certify, uh, your business. Crescendo concluded, um, with a, with a sixth year, I can't believe, sixth year of our lantern parade. Um, so I've heard, I've only seen five of them, but I understand it's the largest it's ever been. Um, a lot of thank you goes to Angie and Natalie and Robin, and about ninety more volunteers that provided more than two hundred volunteer hours. So, great job, congratulations to everybody. We learned a lot this year, um, last year as well, but an increased security presence, including our code enforcement team, Bob, thank you for being out there, Island Security, Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. A different route that enabled, I think, just some, some better mobility on and off the beach, but also um, individuals with disabilities had a front row seat for the festivities. Um, shuttle service from USCB, um, Hilton Head Island campus, and I, I've been talking with Angie and, and Bob and team, and we know it's a largely a positive experience. We are listening to the feedback about parking and traffic, and will determine what improvements, in addition to the ones we made this year, we can make for the next parade. Some, some work to do on that and some intel to understand. Holiday events. Holiday Lights of Fire Rescue Station Three. Um, the team will be there collecting non-perishable food, as well as unwrapped toys for Deepwell for ages one to twelve. Toys no later than December fifteenth, and non-perishable food items no later than January one. Fire Rescue's hosting Santa mailboxes at all our stations through the eighteenth of December. Santa and Sirens continues, so you might have seen the trucks. Um, check our website, um, for the schedule, and chief, is, is a lot here, but so thank you to you and, and your whole team for, for bringing this, this forward every year. Holiday Tree Lighting was rescheduled from a rainy day last week to December tenth. Is that tomorrow? Yeah, tomorrow. Um, five forty-five arrival. Any clarity on five forty-five arrival, about six o'clock? Start thinking about lighting the tree, Angie.
Santa will show up at five forty-five. The tree will be lit at six.
Amen. Thank you. Town's annual Hanukkah celebration and menorah lighting is on track, and it will be the first night of Hanukkah, this Sunday, December fourteenth, from five thirty to six thirty at Low Country Celebration Park, and that, that's where the tree lighting is as well. Almost done. Michael Connolly in our planning team has achieved a career milestone. Um, he has become an American Institute of Certified Planners. He's met that credential. That's simply time, um, and, and experience and a, and a, and really a, a recognition of his hard work and professionalism. Angie and Fire Rescue Senior Staff helped Deepwell set up the annual Santa shop, which provides, uh, or serves over seven hundred families to make sure there's gifts under the tree. And Sean Gillen, where is Sean? Where you find, to find, oh, he did find a seat. Sean was coming in here today, and he's like, where do I sit? It's his first council meeting. Sean is our newly appointed hired assistant town manager, and I, and I first and foremost couldn't be more proud and, and enthused that, that Sean joined us. Um, Sean has oversight of Engineering and Projects Department, which is Stormwater, Transportation, Cap Projects, Facilities, Technology, and Innovation. So Sean's, Sean filled that assistant town manager role. We've seen him, he's been here for a few months as an interim, and prior to that, Sean's been in the consulting business and, uh, also served as the city of Tybee's city manager for about six years. He holds a PUD and a Master of Public Administration from the University of Kentucky. So, welcome to you, thank you to you. And now that I know where you're sitting, I'll know where to look for you. Welcome. How about a little round of applause? And last but not least, I don't think Phaedra is in here, but our very own Phaedra Smith was this year's Scott Liggett Employee of the Year. Phaedra's been with us for more than thirty years, almost thirty years, it says. She wouldn't like that I said more than. Almost thirty years, and we announced her as our employee of the year at our recent holiday luncheon. So, lots of great things ending on a high note, and we're excited to see what comes next year. So, thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Great. Next, we have the Beaufort County School District Student of the Month. Gavin Ward from Hilton Head Island Child, Early Childhood Center. The character trait for the month was courage and tolerance. So Gavin, I'm gonna ask you to join me up over here at the smaller podium.
So Beaufort County School District Character Education Student of the Month, October two thousand twenty-five for Hilton Head Island as kindergarten student, Gavin Ward from Hilton Head Island Early Childhood Center. The character trait chosen today for October was courage, tolerance. Doing the right thing in the face of difficulty and following your conscience instead of the crowd. That's a trait we all can, can live by. Gavin is joined by his teacher, Katie Hunt, and his parents, Ashley and Garrett Ward, and his grandmother as well. Congratulations, Gavin, for exhibiting the character traits that we all agree that are essential for today's success. So I want to give to you a memorative coin, about that. And then this, which is, will be suitable for framing. Hang on your wall so you can always remember it. Congratulations and keep up the good characteristics. You're a great person.
Good job, Gavin.
Let us not forget that that's what it's all about right there. All right. Finally, under Presentations and Recognitions, we have the Town of Hilton Head on Destination Marketing Report, Physical Twenty-Six Marketing Plan Q One, Charlie Clark, Vice President of Communications, Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce. Charlie.
I think the world needs more Gavins.
Yep, absolutely.
Way to go, buddy. Great job.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hello, Mayor Perry, members of council, and, and Mark Orlando, our town manager. You have the full report, uh, of the quarterly report, so we were gonna give you a very brief five-minute highlight through some of those, um, items, and feel free to ask questions along the way if you have them. We know you have a full agenda ahead of you and just want to move through it quickly. So, starting off with the highlights, where's the? Just want to note especially on for media, we had a phenomenal hit, uh, this quarter with Condi Nass Traveler. We were noted as among the twenty-three best family luxury resorts in the U.S. in that story, but what I really wanted to point out was the Mitchellville Outtai- in that story, but what I really wanted to point out was the Mitchellville outtake. For the, here's what they're saying about it, it's that third-party endorsement, "For a history of the region, a short drive to the historic Mitchellville Park in Hilton Head is a valuable introduction to a cultural landmark once home to America's first governed community of formerly enslaved people." As you all know too, we sent it your way, but that is also just recently had a full feature story on Mitchellville as part of the griot, that was part of the Gullah press trip. We continue to push that messaging out that Hilton Head Island is more than just beaches and golf, but there's lots to be had here. Also rounding out for that quarter, we had some phenomenal media coverage, as you can see, a quarter 251 stories and mentions on Hilton Head, but what I really want to note is the depth and breadth of it. In addition to that story, you can see Travel and Leisure Readers, 15 Favorite Islands in the continental U.S., that's a reader-driven poll, as well as Refinery 29. I don't know if a lot of you are reading Refinery 29, but it's a great media outlet. This was also a Gullah feature, "Traveling with my dad taught me about legacy and the gift of time." So, you can see the depth and breadth of those articles and what they're saying, and that really is important, as we've talked before, with AI because it's changing the game for how we do everything and that includes travel media for sure. Let's talk a little bit about social engagement. If you looked in the packet, you'll notice that website visits were down. Does that scare us? No. Does that mean we adapt to it? Absolutely, just as every other destination in America is doing. But I wanted to talk about what that does and how it drives another segment of what we do, which is Hilton Head Island's social engagement. Take a look at this, if you look at social referrals for the quarter over quarter, up Social sessions, up 107%. But what I really want you to note is look at the total social audience, that growth was only 2.4%. Why is that? We all do it. When you look through your social media feeds, I'm sure you've looked and seen that here's a reel you might like, visual content matters, you're consuming the content without necessarily following the page, but that doesn't mean you're not being influenced by that content. We talked before over, gosh, three to four out of every, under 40-year-old is actually booking travel through social media. So, it continues to be a very important driver for us.
May I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
So, just for clarification, those reels and those posts, those are spontaneous, those are folks who have been here otherwise, or are they, or is it a combination of both? Something that the chamber puts together and puts out deliberately?
Oh, we're putting it out very deliberately. We're monitoring, oh, absolutely. We're monitoring, as a matter of fact, speaking of deliberate. Can you advance me to the next slide?
Anyway, while there's a break, I just wanted to make sure that people know exactly how that material is put together and distributed and where it comes from.
So, I want to talk a little bit about that. You asked us to come back and take a look at the pillars by social media and we've done just that. And so, highlights for that, ecotourism punching above its weight as it's prone to do, wellness also, again, that is an audience magnet and it speaks to a trend. If you could see the number of posts over here, which you may be able to see, we're hiding it here with something, that number of posts is 11. Don't let that alarm you either. Remember, this is a quarterly report. That represents almost once a week for a pure history post and what we're doing is pulling in all those eyeballs so that when that history content pops up, there are more eyeballs to look at it and more people to engage with it. And now Chase, our research manager, going to talk a little bit about occupancy.
Yeah, so as you can see, we're seeing the continued national trend of occupancy has been a bit softer recently. For this quarter, we saw about a 5% decline in occupancy. The good news, we're still seeing rates increase. This quarter was about 3%, but what we're seeing is that our rates are increasing even when some of our competitor markets are not. Now, was it enough to offset some of the dip in occupancy? Not quite, we were about 2% down revenue-wise, but 2% down to compare to some of our competitive destinations is actually fairly competitive in and of itself. And so, let's talk about some of those competitive destinations. So, I put together two competitors to look at, Paradise Coast, which is Marco Island and Naples in Florida, the other one being Amelia Island, also, you know, Northern Florida. And we picked those because they have a very similar mix to what we have, very similar clientele. And what we're finding here is that while our occupancy has declined a little bit, we're seeing, one, some declines overall in those competitive markets, but we're also seeing, even with our dip, we're still outperforming those competitive markets. Same thing for rates, our rates are consistently higher than our competitors and when your rates are higher and your occupancy is higher, our revenue is also higher than these two competitor markets that we, you know, come up whenever we're looking at our competitors.
And then just what's next, just to talk briefly on that, I just wanted to touch on that, let me tell you what we're looking forward to. We're looking forward to a coming year with partnership with you, with workshops, upcoming workshops, working together on something that matters to all of us. Again, it's all about balance for us, balance matters, it matters to everyone in this room. And so, we look forward to those continuing conversations. I did want to note, as you know, the Hilton Head Islands Naturally Yours Campaign, the entire campaign is focused on our ecotourism, ecology of our island, the beauty and the nature of this place. Stay tuned for more details, but it was just noted as one of it in a national award, is one of the national award for one of the best campaigns in the country for a tourism and marketing campaign for a destination. We also look forward to sharing the results of the resident sentiment survey that are in and in the coming weeks, we're putting those schedules together with you, each of you and with Kimberly. So, thank you so much, appreciate your time and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions?
I do have one.
Okay.
Is it, so in the past, I've asked the question as to whether or not the DMO advertises and supports all of the businesses on the island or if it's just those that are members of the chamber? And I know I've gotten some questions, we've talked about answers and we've talked about it a little bit, is it developing so that now the chamber, I mean, the DMO using the ATX money is marketing and advertising all of the businesses on the island?
Your short answer to that is yes. Yes, we are, in different places and in different ways. We're limited, for example, in the vacation planner, we have a limited amount of real estate, limited amount of paper. Are we going to put everybody in there? It's not realistic, but on our website, take a look at that, yes, absolutely. Some of the features we pulled out digitally have also been non-members. So, yes, we do continue to do that and we will continue in that effort.
Thank you, I'm glad this is continuing to build.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson?
First of all, thank you for the hits, the information on the hits per value, so that's very helpful to see and I'm not worried about history, it's always been there. And I know we have representatives to look at ATX grants today who represent history and coming history of next year, 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, is that right? Yeah, 2026, yeah. So, the other thing that I wanted to ask about is a number of us were invited to come and meet with chamber representatives and a consultant that you're working on for a new strategic plan. What's the timing for that new plan to come out?
The strategic, we're starting to work on that strategic vision and plan now, moving forward. As you know, it's a 27 and on strategic plan and I think most of you have sat in on that plan. It's somewhere, we also refined the pillars, I think you guys saw that as well, we're refining those pillars and pulling them down. I think one of the most important things, it was actually key, number one on that one, was just the relationship with the town, making sure that that stays strong and that we're all working together. So, we've already started. I mean, even though it's down the line and coming through for our strategic plan long-term, it's something we're already working on.
So, when do you think that will be adopted?
I would say next year, yeah, moving forward, next year, coming into it, we're still refining some things and some of the Low Country curated and some other things, working through some last-minute details on that, but those are conversations we're having. I know that Ari had a conversation this week with a consultant on that. So, looking forward to that, looking forward if you have additional feedback on that.
Yeah, one of the concerns I had was the relationship between the proposed pillars and the pillars that I'm looking at right now, the five pillars, I was trying to figure out which pillar ecotourism fit under. So, that was a concern that I expressed and I hope you'll take that back, that I'm concerned about the relationship between our current core values that are set out and the new pillars being discussed.
Okay, great, we will take a look at it. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Bryson.
All right, any other, Ms. Tonner?
Yeah, in the interest of time, I'll just ask one question and it has to do with occupancy and as you mentioned, occupancy is down and I was wondering if you could give us any further breakdown between hotels and villas, actually you have two questions, and if you found that any one areas were doing better than another as you drill down in that information?
Yeah, so overall, our home villa sector is performing occupancy-wise a little bit better than our hotel sector. There is some nuance there, we're seeing the hotel sector, and this is true on the island as well as nationwide, a lot of the full-service properties, those oceanfront resorts that we have so many beautiful ones on our island, they're performing a bit better than the select service properties, your Holiday Ends is an example. We're really seeing the drop-off that's happening in occupancy kind of hit those select service properties a bit more. Part of that is some economic anxiety, part of that is guest preference maybe toward a short-term rental, but yes, in general, the short-term rentals are occupancy-wise performing a bit better than hotels.
Any other? Hang on, let me get somebody else a chance. Any other questions?
I just had a follow-up thought on that. Obviously, in calendar year 2025, you sort of saw the market change where they were giving off deals and competitive pricing to attract people to come to Hilton Head, okay? So, as you continue to give us the reports going into calendar year 26, I'd like to understand the relationship as far as the attitude of the consumer moving forward, okay? And I always like to know what's coming, you know, people booking ahead of time, I know that that culture has changed, particularly in 24 and 25, I'm just curious to know if there's a shift in 2026. I think we sort of want to understand that a bit as well.
I think it speaks to the trend that he was just talking about as well, that depends on what segment of the economy you're looking at, those select service versus luxury travelers nationwide statistically are traveling. They're still traveling much more and there's that economic uncertainty that's always the biggest predictor. So, again, it stands to speak for us in terms of while those occupancy rates are lower, those rates are, average daily rates are higher and that's where we want to be and what we want to see and we are not alone in this. I think one of the statistics we saw, like the southeast being down 16%, so it's just systemic to travel right now and we're closely watching it, just as every destination is.
Okay, Ms. Becker?
Thank you. Sorry about stepping on anyone's toes. So, I was just going to ask a related question to Councilwoman Tonner, that with the short-term rentals being a higher, more desirable for rentals right now over some of the other products on the island and then seeing that the daily rates are raising, do y'all track that data so that we know where those higher rates are coming from? Is it the short-term rentals raising their rates? Is it, how does that play out? I would be interested in knowing that, if you don't have it now, it's fine.
No, we can track and see, you know, not specific properties, like which particular properties have higher rates, but we can track it by like the number of bedrooms a short-term rental may have and see, you know, the average daily rate broken out by bedroom. We can also look at it in a kind of like area of the island, you know, separated geographically, north end versus south end, that kind of thing. So, yeah, we do have our finger on that pulse and that's a detail we can potentially share in the future, but yeah, we do have that information.
If you have that information, I'd love to get it sooner rather than later, take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you all so very much.
Thanks so much, y'all.
Appreciate it. All right, next we'll move on to general reports from Town Council. Does anybody have any general reports at this time? Ms. Bryson?
Generally, thanks to the town manager for describing a lot of different events, I want to mention a couple of things as well. If you like culture and art, you can't be busy enough this month for sure. There are three theaters that I know of and we booked tickets for all three of these. Lean Ensemble, I think it's called Family Photos, it's something about family photos, that's running this month at Lean Ensemble Main Street Theater. Coastal Arts Center, Frozen is there, it's not just for kids, you know, it's for adults as well, or those who are still kids at heart, like my husband. And then Glass Stage at Clegney Theater, Christmas Bells is going on right now. So, you'll see me and my large kid husband at all of those events. Then also Historic Mitchellville Freedom Park had a ribbon cutting this Friday, even in the rain, for its new garden facility and it was most fascinating to hear from a 10-year-old farmer who had helped to plant plants in that garden and from another, I will call her a young adult farmer, who is leading that program. So, go out there and check out and hopefully it won't be as raining as hard it was when I was there on Friday afternoon, Historic Mitchellville Freedom Park, the new garden. So, it's great to see.
Thank you. Just real quick, I wanted to, once again, in a different way, thanks our Fire and Rescue for stepping up and going above and beyond at the Humane Society's frolic recently and helping out in a big way with fundraising for a very important organization on the island and for all of y'all who help all of our organizations, but one that's near and dear to my heart, the Humane Society. Thank you to the Fire and Rescue.
Any other general reports? All right, I've got a couple. The other day, the Deepwell Project was awarded the PGA Charity of the Year with a $30,000 grant to help maintain and rehab home structures. That is the third organization on Hilton Head that has won the PGA Charity of the Year. The other two were Memory Matters and Second Helpings. So, I just want to give a kudos because that's what we're about as a community, is about giving back and what the Heritage Classic Foundation, the tournament has done, has put these different organizations within the spotlight, so it's a huge kudos. Lastly, I want to recognize somebody that's given over three decades to recreation on Hilton Head as he's sitting there with his mouth wide open, but Frank Soul is being kicked out of the rec center by his staff, forced retirement after many decades, but it seems like an opportune time just to really thank you Frank for everything you've done for recreation on Hilton Head, how you have propelled us forward in a way that may not have happened without your tutelage and leadership. So, from me and council to you, congratulations on your retirement. We know we'll see you around in other areas, but I think it deserves a round of applause. All right, Frank, as we tell Frank Beble, you can leave now. No, just kidding. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, just kidding. Next, we'll move on to reports from council, Ms. Becker, Low Country Area Transportation Study.
I do not have a report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Alfred, Low Country Council of Governments.
No report.
Okay, Ms. Tonner, Beaufort County Airports.
Yes, terminal construction for Phase 1 continues on track, drywall's in, the terrazzo flooring is being installed and passenger boarding bridges, which will be great to have, are expected in January. The expected completion is the end of April. And the other item is United is expanding its service to Hilton Head Airport with additional direct flights to and from Chicago O'Hare International Airport. Starting April 3rd through August 15th, they will be operating daily flights and Saturday service will start March 7th through October 10th and this will provide more options for residents and visitors moving forward.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Southern Low Country Regional Board, we've got Ms. Bryson here, but I'll take that since she was absent at that meeting. There were two updates that were given, one by Bluffton in their growth patterns, I would suggest that you go to their website to look at that, to see what's going on there, I don't want to try to butcher it and cover it, but you can see their presentation. And then we also did one as to what's going on in Hilton Head, basically with workforce housing, so that was basically the meeting that day. Let's see, moving on to Island Recreation Association Board, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mia. Youth Basketball has 300-plus players, 30-plus teams. NFL Flag Football has 160 players on 20 teams this season. The Dome has been installed over the Rex Center Pool in time for Thanksgiving weekend. Staff has been providing swim lessons to 100-plus second-grade students from the Hilton Head Creative Arts and Defuski Island. Oyster Festival went great, even though there was low rain, over 3,000 folks attended the two-day event. Over 1,700 runners and walkers took part in the annual Turkey Trot from, through Hilton Head Plantation. This was a 37th annual race, which has many returning families and visitors annually. It's the must-do on Thanksgiving morning on Hilton Head. Rex Center Gym will be closed for maintenance and painting, the pool however, will be open. Make sure you check hours for the pool during the holiday season at islandrexcenter.org.
Okay, thank you. I have no report for Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation, Gulliguchi Historic Neighborhoods Community Development Corporation, Mr. Brown?
The CDC met on 12/9, we'll be meeting again on 12/17 at 10 a.m. We will be discussing the renaming of the Roy and Salin Center at Sclav Hope Community Park. We'll also- We also have had a discussion and continued discussion around disaster relief here on Hilton Head. That is something that we hope we don't have to involve ourselves in. But there are many organizational Hilton Head that are ready and prepared to help those that may be in need during a disaster. It's my report, sir.
All right, thank you. Community Development Public Services Committee, Ms. Becker.
Thank you. Most recently, the Community Development and Public Services Committee met to interview candidates for a number of positions on boards, commissions and committees. We will be presenting that this evening to the full council and executive session for your consideration. And moving forward to the 15th, we have a meeting. We'll welcome you all to join us 10 o'clock here. And we will be discussing an overlay update for Holiday Homes Neighborhood. Very important to their community and hope you all take interest in that, as well as a discussion and consideration of an ordinance for some zoning map changes to work forward to some additional workforce housing opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Finance Administrator.
Yes, committee met today at 10 a.m. As usual, we had a large crowd here. But a very important topic. We had a discussion with our transportation arm, LRTA. We mainly know them as Pamela Breeze. We will continue that conversation. They have a funding gap in their current budget. They are looking for the town to help with that this year and moving forward. I am going to take the liberty at this point to ask that all of us make contact with our county representatives around this topic. Just for historical context, when the LRTA was created, Beaufort County played a huge role in getting it off the ground. And for many years, the majority of the funding was coming through Beaufort County. Things have changed. Obviously, there continues to be, I would describe it as a misunderstanding between South and North abroad when it comes to Beaufort County. So I encourage all of us that are here in the room, all of us that are listening, to reach out to our county council members to understand the severity of this transportation issue. One of the items that they have hopefully taken off of the table is to discontinue service to Hilton Head for commuters on the weekends. That is not good for us. And our county representatives understand that. And they should be paying attention to trying to help fill this financial gap that is before us all. We will also meet on January 12th at FNA and we will be considering a resolution to adopt town council rules and procedure, including boards, commissions and committees. That's my report, sir.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have a consideration of an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, authorizing the execution and recording of a declaration of covenants regarding workforce housing and the execution and delivery of a long term ground lease of real property, both related to real property owned by the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina at North Point. This item was reviewed in executive session of Town Council at the November 4th meeting. As a result, Town Council voted to approve this item on the first reading out of executive session. Ben Brown, Strategic Initiatives Director, will be conducting the presentation. Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of Town Council, Town Manager. This is the final implementation step to advancing the approved North Point Development Agreement into construction. And what I'm going to do over the next few minutes is I'm going to give a brief background and key events that led us to today. I'm going to discuss next steps and I'll conclude with our project video. We all know where the property is located, just west of the U.S. Post Office. And this is going back to June of 2024. Town Council approved the North Point Workforce Housing Development Agreement with One Street Residential. And this established the roles and responsibilities of both parties in developing and managing a workforce housing neighborhood at North Point. I remember back, the Planning Commission held a public hearing in March of this year. Very well received, unanimously recommended advancing the ZMA and tax amendments to Town Council. Town Council approved the ZMA and tax amendments in May and June. Again, unanimously recommended approval. In June and August, it was reviewed by the Design Review Board, really well received. The Design Review Board particularly enjoyed the site development plan, the architecture, the attention to detail. And they provided some good feedback as well in the resort style pool, for example, which I'll show you in just a minute. But we received unanimous approval from the Design Review Board. And then at our last meeting in November, Town Council approved first reading of the ground lease and the affordability covenants, as well as the first reading of the PSD easement, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. We all know that North Point is an energy efficient, sustainable neighborhood with high quality architecture and construction. This is all in our development agreement. This is also in our ground lease. 157 rental units consisting of one, two and three bedroom apartments. When we were talking about this in June of 2024, we knew that as many as 170 units could probably be land planned on the site. But the development agreement stated that we had to calibrate the site, study the site to see what would actually fit on the property. And it's 157 units and one of the units, two bedroom apartment is for a full time onsite property manager. Amenities and programming that prioritize the well being and quality of life of residents. This is a community building with high speed internet, pool, outdoor communal spaces, grilling, pavilion, seating, playground, walking trails, laundry appliances. But I mention these because these are Class A amenities within a Class A apartment community, nicer than anywhere I've ever rented on Hilton Head. The workforce affordability, this is for Hilton Head Island's essential workforce, teachers, first responders, healthcare providers, hospitality workers and a whole lot more. 50 to 150% of the area median income with at least 50.1% of households earning 60 to 79.99% of the AMI. And as you know, we've had the opportunity to work with a lot of lawyers over the last few months. Not only our own council, but we worked with One Street's outside council. Very helpful, great partner. We worked with RBC's council, RBC as the equity investor. First Citizens, who's a considerable investor in the RBC's workforce housing fund. First Citizens is also the construction lender. We worked with their legal team. Lumet is the permanent financier. We worked with their legal team. Lumet worked with Freddie Mac. We worked with their legal team. But that's where we ended up with at least 50.1% of the households earning 60 to 79.99% of the AMI. And I'm pleased to report that the development agreement and the ground lease are aligned. There is one exception that I'd like to talk about, and that has to do with the onsite on Hilton Head Island employment. And during the due diligence process, during the underwriting process, we were asked a lot of questions and the underwriting team asked a lot of questions along the lines of what if? What if during the 65 year ground lease, there's a point in time when there is not a market for folks who work on Hilton Head Island? A very unlikely scenario, but that was something that we were asked. So we discussed that with the North Point Workforce Housing Committee. And after discussing with the housing committee, we came back and the ground lease as it reads today has a provision in it that if no sooner than three years after the commencement of the ground lease, the commencement of the ground lease is when the first CO is issued, which is anticipated for early 2027. So no sooner than three years, so no sooner than 2030, if there was a unit that remained vacant for at least 45 days and the property manager could not find a tenant that met both the income qualifications and the employment qualifications, that unit could be rented for up to for a 12 month period to somebody who is both income qualified, who also worked in Beaufort County. So what that would mean is say, for an example, somebody in Bluffton who met the income qualifications rented that unit. At the end of their one year lease, they would either have to have full time employment on Hilton Head Island or they would have to leave the unit. Or if the property manager couldn't fill that unit, then they would have the opportunity of leasing for another one year term. Very unlikely scenario, but what we found during the underwriting process is that for our development partner to secure the $43 million capital stack necessary to move North Point into construction, this provision has to be in the ground lease. The next steps include second reading of the ground lease and covenants. That's what we're doing right now. A second reading of the PSD easement, we'll do that in just a few minutes. The resolution authorizing the million dollar grant, we'll discuss that in just a few minutes. And One Street Residential, they're actually meeting right now. They're meeting with their finance team at 3:30 today. They're anticipating closing their financing this week. The last item they need is the signing of the ground lease and the affordability covenances. And the construction will start in January. The first apartments are anticipated to be released in early 2027. And then substantial completion is anticipated for mid 2027. So it's about 12 to 13 months to release the first units. Units will continue to be released until substantial completion, which is anticipated for an 18 month build. So families moving into North Point in early 2027 and substantial completion by mid 2027. I always like to share this, but this is a site plan that's been really well received by the Planning Commission, Design Review Board. Over 50% functional open space throughout the community, neighborhood scale and design, a combination of one, two and three story buildings. As I mentioned, Class A amenities, resort style pool. We calibrated the site to accommodate 157 units. Two story buildings right by Marsh Point to meet the neighborhood scale of Marsh Point. And over an acre and a half preserved in perpetuity right along Jarvis Creek. This is areas for walking trails, dog park. There's a 60 inch specimen live oak in this property. It's just, it's a beautiful area, great site plan. Here's an elevation plan of the northern part of the property, two story cottage style buildings. But it shows lots of functional open space. Right across the street is the swimming pool, edible gardens, yoga lawn, nice views of Jarvis Creek. And then we have the rendering of the three story buildings. But over here, we have one, two and three story. We have the gym, clubhouse, leasing office and just really beautiful, high end architecture. And the very last slide I have to share with you is our project video.
Can I afford to live on Hilton Head Island to work on Hilton Head Island?
So many communities now are involved in addressing the shortage of affordable and attainable housing. And yet I know of no other community that's brought the resources together or the effort that the Town of Hilton Head Island has to make this possible for 35 years. One Street has been committed to creating workforce housing. I think we've learned a lot along the way over the years about how to do that successfully.
Previous council came out with this idea and council currently is taking it forward. So it really is a championship of council, right? To create a public private partnership and utilize resources that we have within the town to make certain that we create an atmosphere that is, is one to promote health and wealth and growth and just have the assets and the amenities here to create a fun lifestyle too.
It's a site that the town applied some years ago. The fact that we have the land to leverage and negotiate our outcomes with. By putting the land in here, receiving the federal grant, the stimulus money from COVID, the American Rescue Plan grant. We have a million dollars earmarked.
You have to work on the island to live at the site. We have one, two, three bedroom apartments, four of the wide range of incomes from firefighters to nurses to police officers, but also those folks that are working in food and beverage and landscaping and all of those core, you know, just primary jobs, but those core jobs that are island.
We'll have the ability to create a boutique scale of community with lots of green space, walking trails, sidewalks, amenities, community gardens, but also things that will help knit this resonance together as a true community.
It really is a special thing to come in here and create a quality of life for our workers. You know, for the people that make a difference in our community and partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club, with the Rec Center, with other organizations to bring a different and unique quality of life aspect to workforce housing.
There's no place that I know of like Hilton Head Island. So this is a special place with a special form of beauty. How many of us flock here because we just love to be here? The opportunity to do this with a forward thinking town and town council and community that includes nonprofit organizations and businesses is unlike anything we've ever been able to do. And I think the result is going to be more beautiful and more livable than anything we've had an opportunity to do in the past.
Can I afford to live on Hilton?
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
Of approval?
Tagged.
Got a first and a second. Has anybody signed up to speak on this agenda item?
Williams.
He passes?
That's all.
That's all? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the dice. Anybody have some questions? Ms. Becker.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm excited to be here today at this point, but I do have a couple of things to say. This project is going to be such a welcome and needed addition to our community. But it's going to be an asset as it's been developed. And Ben, you certainly have a large part to do with the success of where we are today. And I want to thank you for that and all the team that's been working on this together. I know that I've been here from the beginning of these conversations and have had lots of questions. And as usual, have a couple more that I just want to, if not for myself, for those who are listening, make sure that they hear a few of the details that maybe there could be some confusion over or misunderstanding. And so with that, the first one is something that you mentioned, the million dollars that comes along with the finalizing of this portion that we're in today. That's not coming from taxpayer money. That's not coming from any revenue that the town has garnered. It is actually part of the monies that were received back in, I guess, the COVID years, the American Rescue. Can you just tell us a little bit about that so there's clarity in terms of where the million dollars is coming from?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. It was considered income replacement dollars, ARPA funds, COVID stimulus money that the town received from the federal government that was earmarked for the North Point Initiative going back to 2022. And that essentially that workforce housing grant is also included in the development agreement and the ground lease towards eligible site improvements. In short, North Point will have about $4 million worth of site work. And that $1 million will cover 25% of it. And following the conclusion of the ground lease, all those improvements will come back to the town. So yeah, no tax money, or I shouldn't say that, no local tax money.
No local tax money. And so the other 75% of those funds are coming from where?
From our development partner. The town's providing the ground lease, the grant, the entitlements and the development partner is responsible for all of the financing. It's about a $43 million capital stack. They're also responsible for any potential overruns. None of that burden comes back to the town.
Right, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear. So that is the total contribution in cash that the town is putting towards this effort. Our biggest contribution is the land lease.
Mr. Orlando wants to chime in real quick.
Okay.
It's also important that we do differentiate between the onsite investment from the ARPA fund and then the offsite investment in a road and some stormwater improvements through the United States Post Office. So let's make sure we don't surprise anybody by that.
Correct.
Because those are separate funds and those are different funds.
Yes, sir.
Correct, and thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Orlando. That is an important piece to make sure that we're separate and clear about as people are thinking about these items. But I just want to follow up on that and continue to express what I think you've already alluded to and actually made quite clear. But it is the LSI who is responsible for all the taxes moving forward, all the construction. all the construction costs moving forward. And in fact, there's really nothing else other than, as Mr. Orlando has pointed out, the post office piece, which is an access road that's incredibly important with regard to safety. But there's no other additional costs to the town for this project.
There are not, and this is a really interesting initiative because you hear about the affordable housing initiatives, which is really the 50% AMI and lower. This is 60 to 150. But there's no tax abatement on this. This is, it's a great framework.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity for the town. I think that with a true private partner, private-public partnership. And I just want to make sure that folks are really understanding the importance and the significance of it for the town, that we're getting a Class A product that is addressing the needs with our essential workers and really not costing the taxpayers anything. And so I'm happy to support that because of those reasons, quite frankly, as along with the fact that you, in the committee, in the advisory committee that's worked so hard over the years, has brought us to a point where I think we are going to see a very, a good product that we can be quite proud of and hopefully will never see. I am also, and I thank you for addressing it, concerned about that change in terms of the work requirement that may or may not ever happen, probably will never happen, quite unlikely that it would ever happen. But I do understand putting that into the agreement as a what-if and understanding the needs of that by the underwriters and balancing with the public good that we're going to be really establishing in those that will be able to serve, which is not only those workers, but our entire island. So I want to make sure that there is a balance there and an understanding that sometimes a little bit of give to get. I guess overall, those are the strong points I wanted to make sure that not only I was clear about, but that others who might be listening are clear about as well. I do have a question. We talk about occupancy a lot on the island, and I was curious because there's nothing within the documents that I read, unless I misread them or looked over. It was a lot to read, that spoke to occupancy of any particular unit and how that's derived and what the limitations are. Do you, can you help me with that a little bit?
Ultimately, that's the responsibility of the property manager to govern. It is One Street Residential, as well as RBC, both have the requirement that no more than two people per bedroom. And that's the responsibility of the property manager to make sure that their tenants are adhering to that. But the benefit of North Point is that we have an onsite property manager. So they should be able to identify pretty quickly if there's a one-bedroom with three people in it or if there's ever more than two people per bedroom.
Okay, and so that's written into the lease agreements and the understanding from, at that level, not necessarily within our documents?
That's correct. It's within the agreement with RBC and One Street Residential.
And I guess the other thing that comes to mind that, you know, is a politically incorrect question to ask, but I'll ask it because I'm that person who has to ask all the questions, whether they're popular or not. But there is a household that's looked at within each one of these units. And we're certain that those who are taking these leases are all, in one shape or another, have some documentation to be legally in our country.
Not being in the leasing business, let me try to answer it a little bit differently. To live at North Point, you have to work on Hilton Head Island. To work on Hilton Head Island, you have to be a resident or have the appropriate documentation to work here.
Right.
So that employment qualification is going to make sure that somebody is legal. Now, not being in the leasing business, I can't tell you if somebody is going to have a friend come visit, et cetera.
Yeah, a friend is a different conversation. That's, holding the lease is what I'm referring to. Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear for everyone, that that is kind of related. You need that documentation to have a job, and you need a job to live here, and therefore we can make some general assumption along with that. And these terms and conditions, there is no ability within it for amendment. So they're going to be recorded, and they get recorded first prior to the next step, which is perfect in the way it should be. But is there a mechanism at all for any amendment over the years?
There is. That was discussed at length with the lawyers. It, of course, requires town council's approval, but it also requires the lender's approvals.
So any amendments in the future that would be suggested or brought forward, a sitting council at that point would have to approve of those. So any changes to the agreement that we're now considering would also have to be agreed to by a subsequent council?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure all of that has been clarified and stated for everyone to hear. So with that, my questions are answered, and thank you, and I appreciate all the hard work that you all have done.
Thank you for your support.
Ms. Bryson?
Just a couple of things. Can you bring back up the site plan? I like to look at the pretty pictures.
Yeah, that's my favorite one.
Site plan before the...
Yeah, I'm going to make it.
It's all right.
It's just, there we go.
There we go, that's great. So one of the things you mentioned, I think it's important for us and the public to hear again, and that is, when we prepared this site plan with our partners, we wanted to make sure that there were mitigating features respecting our neighbors. We have mostly neighbors to the north side. And so I believe I heard you say that those are two-story buildings which reflect the two-story buildings of the neighbors on the north side. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
It is, and we took it one step farther. We looked at the adjoining properties, particularly the U.S. Postal Service site, and saw that there was a lot of drainage deficiencies. And after further studying it, we learned that that property was developed devoid of any type of drainage infrastructure in the front of the site, and we're going to fix that. We're going to collect it and convey it onsite. We are collecting all of the stormwater through the bioretention swales and systems so it can infiltrate. We worked really hard to incorporate best practices throughout the site plan.
That's great. And speaking of infrastructure, there's going to be improved access. That was one of the questions raised during some of the meetings. And can you speak to the access on to Gumtree? And any questions about pedestrian crossing there? I think some folks have asked about that as well.
Yeah, my pleasure. The, as you know, I've been working with the U.S. Postal Service for about three years, and it was an entirely new experience for me. But with a lot of help from Senator Davis, as well as Senator Graham's office, we were able to work with a decision-maker in Washington, D.C. that helped us put 1.8 acres under contract to create safe access from the North Point property to Gumtree Road. And we all know the school campus is less than a mile away, but currently, there's not great access. What we have incorporated into our CIP program is right now, the CIP team is surveying the area on Gumtree Road to the school campus and preparing a design that will improve the crosswalks, the visibility, and signage going all the way from school road up past the crosswalk towards the intersection. And that will be presented to town council in the capital budget for approval soon. And then those monies would be available as soon as July. And then the goal is to have all of that work complete by the end of the calendar year 2026 in anticipation for families moving into North Point in January 2027.
Thank you. I know a lot of folks ask about this. Much improved access there for pedestrians and vehicles, great. And then the last thing to point out is that the town is the lessor with only one lessee, and that is who will be handling the rental and the maintenance of the property. It's a 65-year lease, so a long-term workforce housing here, which is important to us as well. And then, when the lease is done, the town gets back the improvements. So all good, positive things.
And under the very unlikely scenario of a default, those improvements will come back to the town as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Toller?
Real quick, this is an excellent example of public-private partnership in delivering workforce housing, and it's really a model for communities. And so I'm very excited about this, and I have one question. When is the groundbreaking?
That's fun. We've been talking about that. We think the site will be ready for a groundbreaking in February if they can mobilize and start the site work in January. We are anticipating starting the very first foundation in the second half of February, and I'd love to do the groundbreaking just before the second half of February. More to come.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm buying you Valentine candy.
All right, seeing on consideration of an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, authorizing the execution and recording of a declaration of covenants regarding workforce housing and the execution and delivery of a long-term ground lease of real property, both related to real property owned by the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, at North Point, second reading. Was first motioned by Mrs. Mr. Alfred and second by Ms. Bryson. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. So moved, 7-0. Awesome. Next up, for consideration is an ordinance of the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, authorizing the execution and delivery of a non-exclusive easement for ingress, egress, and utilities with the Hilton Head Public Service District at North Point, second reading. This item was reviewed in executive session of Town Council at the November 4 meeting. As a result, Town Council approved, voted to approve the item on first reading out of executive session. Mr. Brown, you're still here. Move for approval, Mayor? Has anybody signed up to speak on this agenda item?
Mr. Williams.
He passes? Any discussion from council? Seeing none, we have consideration of an ordinance of the Town Council of Hilton, the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, authorizing the execution and delivery of a non-exclusive easement for ingress, egress, and utilities with the Hilton Head Public Service District at North Point. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved, 7-0. Onto the business, new business. Onto new business with consideration of resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement regarding the payment of $1 million for site improvements in connection with the development of the North Point Workforce Housing Project and authorizing the execution and delivery of an escrow and disbursement of the funds and the completion of the town's obligations described in the agreements. Move for approval, Mr. Mayor? You, Ms. Becker? Okay. Can anybody sign up to speak on this item? Any discussion from council? Seeing none, we have consideration of a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement regarding the payment of $1 million for site improvements in connection with the development of the North Point Workforce Housing Project and authorizing the execution and delivery of an escrow and disbursement of the funds and the completion of the town's obligations described in the agreements. Motion made by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Becker. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. So moved, 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Up next, we have the consideration of a resolution of the Town of Hilton Head Island approving the recommendation for the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee for the calendar year 2026 grants. The ATAC Committee Chair presented the Chairman's letter to the Finance and Administrative Committee at its November 18, 2025 meeting, outlining additional details about the committee deliberations, application requests, and 2026 funding recommendations. By a vote of 2 to 1, the FNA Committee approved forwarding the resolution of the Town of Hilton Head approving the recommendations from the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee for the year 2026 grants to the Town Council for final approval. In addition, the resolution included the recommendation that any grant funds awarded but not expended by the recipient organizations by the end of 2026 grant year to be carried forward in full 100% and applied to 2027 accommodations, tax grant fund allocations. Mr. Byrd?
Wow. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Town Manager. Dave Byrd, Director of Finance for the Record. As mentioned, I'm here today to present the recommendation for awarding $4,76,992 to 35 grant applicants. There were 37 that did apply, one withdrew, and one was denied in the November 7 process of awarding the grants. And without further ado, went through a lot of detail on the introduction there, so I'd like to introduce Keith Schlegel to come answer any questions and present as well.
Okay. So for general discussion, for council, what we will do with the... You can come on up, Keith. What we will do to bifurcate, we'll go through the list individually and pick out any ones that we may have questions on and want to have additional discussions on. And then we'll vote on the group that remains, and those that we want to have additional discussions on or questions on, we'll come back, and we'll work on each one of those individually. Did you want comments from me, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon?
Do you want comments from me, or do you want to take... You can go right ahead and talk about the process that you all went through, and then... Thank you. We'll bring it back to council. So this year was a different year. Town Council made the decision to allocate a specific amount of dollars so that we would know how much we were able to recommend to you rather than kind of guessing and waiting for the last quarterly numbers of ATACS to come in. The result of that, though, was that the grant applications were $578,000 higher than the allocation of funds available. The committee we polled took an average of about 50 hours, we think, working on this program this year. So that's 350 hours or more into this process, trying to be as efficient as we could be, be as respectful of all of the applicants as we could be, and do as much as we could for each and every grant applicant. Round one, we were $210,000 off. Round two, we were $56,000 off. There were multiple votes on each of these grants, not all of which by any means were unanimous. So there was a lot of discussion about where we would need to make cuts. The thought process generally was that we were trying to bring people back closer to the 2025 awards where we could. We were trying to give credit to people who bring in the greatest amount of ATACS dollars into the pool for ongoing and future years. So that's certainly important. We looked at the four or five key relationships with the town strategic plan so that we were rewarding those grant applicants who may not have had the greatest tourist dollars, but they're critically important to the culture, to the arts here on Hilton Head Island. I think we would all agree that we are extremely fortunate to have these organizations, to have the world-class amenities, culture, arts, and programs that we have. Some of the cuts that were made were due to the fact that we felt that the financial reporting and/or the tourism reporting was not as robust as we would like it to be. We typically, in the past, this is my third year on the committee, we typically have suggested to people they need to step up that information in order to allow us to help them. Those that have not done that took a bit of a hit this year. But by and large, we tried to spread the damage as widely as we could and not really harm any of these programs because we felt that each of these 35 grant applicants were deserving of funds. Happy to answer any questions. So I think what we can do right now is run through the list, see if there's any ones that you all want to pull out for individual discussions. So we can just run down the list itself, say yea or nay. And then, once we get the initial approved or list with no questions, then we can make a motion on that and then move forward to get those off, and then we'll come back to those that we have questions on. Does that sound acceptable? So Art League, Art Center of Coastal Carolina, Each Cat Sailors, Community Foundation of the Low Country, David M. Carmines, Gala Travel Theater, Gala Museum, Arbor Town Merchants Association, Hilton Head Audubon Society, Hilton Head Coral Society. Kim, if you can scroll down for me. Hilton Head Concourse d'Allegance, Hilton Head Dance Theater, Hilton Head Airport, Hilton Head Allen Bridge Association, Hilton Head Land Trust, Hilton Head Allen Rec Association, Wing Fest and other festivals, Hilton Head Allen St. Patrick's Day Parade, Hilton Head Martin Luther King Committee for Justice, Hilton Head Wine and Food Fest, Hilton Head Wine and Food, Inc., Rhythm & Brew.
Hilton Head Wine and Food, Inc., Rhythm and Brews. Hilton Head Symphony Orchestra. Lean Ensemble. Long Cove. Low Country Golf Course Owners Association.
Mayor, I have some questions about Low Country Golf Course Owners Association.
Low Country Gullah. Mitchellville Preservation. Native Island Business Community. Almedal Quilt Guild. Paul Miller Fund. Rotary Club of Hilton Head. Deepines Forest Preserve. Sea Turtle Patrol. Shelter Cove Harbor Company. Tetex Hilton Head. Boys and Girls Club. Coastal Discovery Museum. Coastal Discovery Museum CIP Honey Horn. First tee of the Low Country. Heritage Library. Outside Foundation. Sandbox. University of South Carolina. World Affairs Council of Hilton Head. Did I miss anything? DMO supplement grant 350, that's not on there. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve all of those recommendations except for the Low Country Golf Course Owners Association?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Kim, do we have anybody speak, sign up to speak on these items? Okay?
Yes, Heather Rath. And Dave Ferguson?
Don't see him.
Chester Williams. That's all I have.
Okay. Any discussion from council on these items?
Mr. Mayor, just one...
Yes.
Thing. The wording that you read, I think, is slightly different than the resolution. Let's make sure that I'm clear on this. When it comes to, the ATAC Committee had asked that council take up any funds that were left over from a current year, and they go back to the ATAC grant funding, and then also, by way of 100%, go back to the pool the applicants can apply for. Okay? The resolution is in the packet. There's a little confusion on that, but I think you read 100% in the correspondence to get us into this motion. But I just want to make sure that we are clear on that, make sure we okay with that from a legal standpoint as well, so that that is the case.
And I'm going to rely on, on Mr. Byrd or Mr. Coltrane to answer that question.
Mayor, I might can also be helpful with regard to that language. I think the language in question is under the now there for. The last line of subsection A, where it's talking about if there's any money left over being carried forward in a 65% fund and in the same distribution category being capitalized for the calendar year 2027. So it shouldn't be in the same distribution with 33% to ATAC grants, 5% to workforce housing, 25% to, I think that was capital, and 10% to general fund. I may have those two backwards, but it should be that any of the amount carried forward would go to the ATAC grants category in our adopted policy. So that simple language change would, I think, would clarify the intent of the ATAC Committee and the Finance Administrative Committee.
I would just like to ask if our legal counsel can...
I'm looking to Curtis to see if there's any additional input on this.
Um, the, the text we have here is what I was told the committee was looking for, and Ms. Bryson, I'm not entirely sure I followed your comment. If you could repeat that.
I'll try again. So you would change the very last line of subsection A on the now there for, instead of saying in the same distribution category for calendar year 2027, and looking at our adopted policy, and I have the actual numbers in front of me, the distribution category has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven entries, and so it's not meant to go back in that same percentage of distribution. It's meant to go back 100% to the category labeled ATAC Grant Awards. So it should say in the ATAC Grant Awards category. Because the committees didn't want it to be whatever number it is. Let's say it's 100,000. I'll make it easy on my mathematical brain here. So let's say it's 100,000 left over. It wouldn't just be 33,000, 33% going back to ATAC grants. It would be 100% of 100,000 going back to ATAC grants category.
Can you scroll up?
My, my question is, does that 65% fund represent 100% of that quote-unquote $100,000? Because the 65% fund is minus the DMO's portion.
No, we'd work that way, Mayor.
The 65% fund is the fund that is left to the town to distribute to the various applicants for all this. So if I understand Ms. Bryson's question, if you could scroll up, Kim. So, well, yes, section A again. So what, to me, anyway, it says is that in the event that applicant, you know, A doesn't consume its grant, the grant then is returned to, or the unconsumed part, rather, is returned to the town's ATAC fund, being the 65% fund, in the same distribution category as the party who didn't spend it.
Well, that's a lot more complicated than what I suggested, but yeah, it is, it's 100% of the 65% goes back to ATAC grants.
Well, well, it's 100% of what doesn't get spent.
Right. Saying, saying the same thing on that.
I'm trying to use the language from our existing policy to make it clear.
Does that, if I may ask a question? Does, does that apply to workforce housing, which can be up to 15%? Does not come out of the 65 potentially?
That wouldn't be the same distribution category.
That, 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 that's why with, with the committee, what we tried to say is if funds are unspent, and for everyone's knowledge, generally that major funds are unspent due to weather, so the outdoor events don't happen. It could be 100 or 200,000. Other than that, it might only be 15 or 20,000, which is not a lot, but if it's 200,000, and then it goes back into the general fund, we only get 33% as Councilwoman Bryson said. If it goes back into the 65% category, it seems to me there's a potential that that could, up to 15% of that then go off into workforce housing, which is your purview to, to decide. The recommendation or request from the ATAC Committee was that it all go back to the ATAC grant program for the ensuing year.
It, it, not into a specific category.
Just into the grant program, not to any specific recipient, no.
Right, right. Or, or not, not recipient, but, but category as we've determined where some funding needs to go. So, because I know you all didn't follow that exactly, especially when you had to cut. So, Mr. Coltrane, is there an issue with it going back into the general 65% fund and not specifically into a category?
Um, no. I mean, I think the way to accomplish that would be on the next to the last line in sub A, put a period after the word "fund." And strike the rest of it.
I think you still need the clarity of saying that it goes to the ATAC's grant.
The ATAC's grant.
Yep.
So that it's crystal clear.
Yeah, Curtis, I think what Ms. Bryson is trying to accomplish is that there's some reference in this subsection to the 33% that we are offering the ATAC applicants, and that does not do this.
But Mr. Orlando, let me ask you a, a question real quick, if I could. We've got a motion on the table to forward 100% unused funds and apply to the accommodations tax grant fund allocation. If we pass that motion, then does the ordinance itself need to be corrected?
The ordinance itself would if, if, if there's a differential, and I'm going to lean on Mr. Coltrane over there. I can't see Dave Byrd behind it. I'm just trying to, there you are. If, if it's not by the letter of, of the ordinance, it needs to be amended. So the question, go ahead.
Actually, a resolution we're talking about, just not to confuse us with ordinance.
Right. Right.
Then would it address Ms. Bryson's question if, again, on the next to the last line, aft, delete what's there after the word "in" and replace it with ATAC's Grant Awards?
Yes, that's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, you can.
Or go ahead.
No, good. I, I was thinking if there needs to be an amendment to the resolution, but there doesn't because the resolution is correct. It's just the, the formal signed document that is, would need scrutiny correction.
Uh, no, I think, first of all, I'm not licensed to practice law in this state, and I'm not trying to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, if, if the, if the suggestion that was made five minutes ago, meaning that you replace the text related to the 65% fund and distribution category to the, with the ATAC's Grant Awards, then there would need to be a motion to amend the motion on the table to amend the text of subsection A to read "be carried forward in the ATAC Grant Awards," period.
So moved.
Then you would need to vote on that proposed amendment.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Well, yeah, Mr. Alfred has to agree to the motion.
You all know how agreeable I am.
Yes, we do.
And I would just suggest, before we move on with any votes, that they would take a moment to clearly explain to the public what we're doing here. Al wants to do that.
That's not, no, it's not up to you. It's not up to you. That, that is up to, that is up to Mr. Byrd to, to explain what it is that we're trying to clear up here.
We're trying to clear up the...
Come on up.
We're trying to clear up the language of any unspent funds that we want to allocate back specifically to ATACs and clarify that versus the way the language is written now, which would leave it a little bit gray. That's how I would say it.
Okay. Do you agree with this, this movement forward?
I do.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion from council?
I, I do. I, I just want to say thank you, first of all. I think that the change in terms of the leftover fund, did I have permission? Yeah, okay. The, the change in terms of the leftover funds at the end of the year, going back into the 65% fund piece is, is wise and appropriate, and I think, congratulations for, for moving that forward into, into this document. And so the way I just want to clarify it for myself, what we've just changed is that the allocations based, that the ATAC Committee worked so diligently on to recommend to us, those dollars, those dollars will be, I guess there's still a question as to one of the categories, but those dollars will be accepted in some form or fashion, and whatever was left over then will move back into the, not left over back from this year, but not spent from previous years, will go back into the ATAC fund to be used and distributed during the '27 cycle. Correct? But not necessarily within, within any particular category.
Correct.
All right. I hope I didn't make it more muddier than it sounded to me as I was listening to it all, but I understand it now, so I can vote on it comfortably.
So we have a motion to amend to change wordage on the resolution, be carried forward, ATAC's Grant Awards, period, unless we want to just take out, you know... Never mind, never mind, never mind, never mind. The motion was made by Ms. Bryson, approved by Mr. Alfred, and seconded by Mr. Brown. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved seven zero. Now we're going back to the original motion, which was made by Mr. Alfred, seconded by Mrs. Becker. Any additional discussion on that?
Yeah, this is where I have the question about Low Country Golf Association.
No, 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 we're, we're approving, we're approving all others except for Low Country Golf.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure.
Yep. So we'll come to that one next. So any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved seven zero. Now we'll move on to Low Country Golf Course Owners Association.
Now, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Schlegel and, and his entire committee. I see at least one of them sitting out there, and I didn't know whether, I, I see applicants also sitting out there, but thank you to the committee and also the town staff who worked very hard and putting together documents, and thank you to all the applicants. I did watch almost all the presentations, and then I did sit here in person and watch the committee deliberate during its three rounds. So very good work done by everyone. Very tough year. We gave you a tougher policy to deal with, and then we had less funds to be able to distribute, so a challenge for all of us. The reason that I, I called out this one is because we've called it out several times before. I look back as recently as the May 2025 amendments, sorry, minutes, where the question was raised again about $200,000 for Low Country Golf. I think this, as best I could tell, relates back to 2021 fiscal year when the chamber was asking for supplemental funding for Low Country Golf, and then it carried forward to, the first time that I sat as a town council member to take a look at requests from the chamber as our designated marketing organization or DMO was for additional funds above the 30% that they get of ATAC's funds by statute. At that time, the council was requested, this was for 2023, for a total of $710,000 in supplemental funds. Of the $710,000, there was $260,000 asked for golf marketing. And, and let me say this, I, I agree with golf being marketed on this island. It's definitely an economic driver, no question about that. I confess I play golf, and as I've said before, I don't invite you to come watch me, but I appreciate it, and I think it should be marketed. I think it's primarily the responsibility of the chamber to market golf. So at any rate, at that time, when I was adding up what I thought should be the right number for supplemental request from the chamber, it was $350,000, which is the amount that was awarded that year by the previous town council. That left out meetings in group funding and also destination golf marketing. So the original request was reduced from $710,000 to $350,000, in my mind, leaving out destination golf marketing. The previous, sorry, the subsequent year, there was no supplemental grant awarded to the DMO, not for any purpose. So then that left us with Low Country Golf coming in a separate pathway to ask for supplemental funding, if you will, in addition to the marketing the chamber was doing. And in previous years, they had been provided, and if I look at this, yeah, there it is. So 2023, $50,000, and 2024, when we had more money, 100,000, then last year, 100,000, they requested, I dropped down a line, sorry, 150,000, and then they requested this year 150,000, and during the three rounds, the ATAC came up with 100,000. But during those rounds and the discussions, the committee asked about 200,000 being provided by the chamber for marketing of golf, and there were a number of questions, questions asked about who's doing what marketing and what's the relationship between the chambers or the DMO's marketing of... and what's the relationship between the chambers or the DMO's marketing of Low Country Golf and also the supplemental funding, if you will, through the ATAC process. So those questions I don't think were addressed. And during the Finance Administrative Committee meeting, I asked similar questions that the committee had. And I don't think those questions were addressed at that time. In looking at our core values that we've charged the DMO with carrying out in marketing, we are more focused on ecotourism, history, arts and culture. And if you look at the list of organizations, and it's been said before, we have a lot of wonderful organizations in our community. And a lot of those that support ecotourism, arts and culture and history need more assistance with marketing because the chamber is not carrying out as much marketing for them as for golf and the beach. So we need to keep pushing on that. And for that reason, I would move to amend, or maybe a separate motion, I would move to reduce the funding of Low Country Golf Course Owners Association from $100,000 to $50,000 and to reallocate that $50,000 to history, cultural organizations as followed. If I can find my one note here. And so to give $5,000 each to the following organizations. That is the Gullah Museum, Low Country Gala, the Outdoor Foundation, Sea Turtle Patrol, and Hilton Head Symphony. $5,000 each of those. Sorry, that's not enough. $10,000 each of those. Thank you. Wasn't doing my math right. So that would be my motion to provide $50,000 to Low Country Golf Course Association and $10,000 each to those other five organizations.
Is there a second to the motion?
That's what I think our core values are.
I'll ask one more time. Is there a second to that motion? That motion fails. Is there another motion on the table?
This mayor moved to approve Low Country Golf Association an amount of $100,000 that recommended by the Finance Administrative Committee and also the ATAC Committee.
Second.
Second. Ms. Turner? Any other discussion from council? Mr. Williams, since you had signed up to speak, I'll ask you, okay. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving $100,000 to Low Country Golf Course Owners Association, motion made by Mr. Brown, seconded by Ms. Turner, please raise your right hand. Opposed. Vote is six to one. Okay.
Next, we have a consideration of orders to the town of Hilton Head Island authorizing the issuance of general.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schlegel. Issuance of general obligation debt bonds, first reading. The Finance Administrative Committee on November 18th, 2025, voted two to one to forward this item to town council for review and consideration for approval. Mr. Byrd?
Good afternoon again, Mayor, Council and Town Manager, Dave Byrd, Director of Finance for the Record. Just want to make a couple of introductions of folks that are in attendance today. Michael Seesing with Burr and Foreman from a legal perspective, and Andy Smith from First Try and Advisors is here in attendance. And somewhere, I think, is John McGowan from Chicago.
He's online.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Hello there.
So John is with us as well. So in front of you today, we've got basically a follow-up from a presentation that was made to Finance Administrative Committee last month on November 18th for up to $35 million general obligation bond. And the language here in the recommendation of the letter is what was voted upon at the meeting with the two to one vote. What we did add is additional underlying language to kind of narrow this to the acquisition and renovation of certain and existing improvements, if any, and located at Nine Park Lane and 10 Park Lane for the new headquarters of Fire, Rescue and Emergency Operations Center and land acquisition cause for conservation purposes. So just wanted to kind of highlight that those were additional items added to further specify the language that was voted on last month. There is a PowerPoint that we can walk through. See if you can pull that up. I have not done this, so forgive me.
Scroll through there.
There we go. Okay, so we've got a PowerPoint that was presented last month. There's been a few modifications to it, but mostly it's the same information. But we have a couple of overview slides, which kind of give a brief description of the following slides that we're going to cover. So I'll go through the slides themselves. But, so now we're kind of like, why are we here now? What's driving this today? The biggest one is we have a surplus in our debt service fund. And that's been basically building up from our increase of appraised values that have happened, plus our two mills that was issued for fiscal year 2026, which is used to pay back debt that's been issued. And that balance has roughly $11.7 million available today that we need to utilize. The way we were utilizing this is to issue debt to do that, and we'll get into that in a minute. Also, the timing as well, because our AAA status that we recently received has given us favorable interest rates. I think we talked about the revenue bond that just passed on the beach. I think our interest was 3.33%, which is great. And I'm not going to make any commitments on this, but it could be around 3% give or take, which is, so the timing of that is good from that perspective. And we have a potential acquisition to be made for the Fire and Rescue and Energy, Emergency Operations Center of $9 million. So that is happening as well. So those are why we're here today. Just a little bit of a summary of where we are from a geo perspective. We've got roughly $41.8 million that we have issued out there today and $28.5 million are related to the the maximum we can use by state policy. And then we have 80% of that from a council perspective. So those have the limits applied to it. Getting to the next slide. This is just a general overview of the historical use of bonds from a town perspective. And of course, we spiked during Hurricane Matthew in 2018. And we have consistently paid that balance down to $41.8 million as of the end of 2025. So a good fiscal practice with relation to that. And then getting into the other side of the equation, which is revenue bonds, we have roughly $30.7 million that is outstanding. That also includes the $19 million that we just did last week, okay? And from a historical perspective of that, once again, we spiked with Hurricane Matthew of $87 million. And that balance has come down to $11.8 million as of the end of 2025. So we're in a really good position from a debt perspective, I would say. Looking forward into mills and from a historical perspective to where we are today, you know, we spiked in 2018 with, once again, Hurricane Matthew.
Mr. Byrd, if you can hang on one second. Kim, if you could move John McGowan, that would be great.
Oh, I thought that was just me. Thank you.
No.
He was throwing me off.
There we go. Thank you.
He was covering the information.
Struggling, I'm sorry. My arm is messed up.
You can continue speaking. Go ahead. We can.
Okay, so in the graph here, you have different breakouts of how the mills are being used. Blue is operating, the orange is debt service. And you kind of have a historical, and then we had a special for Hurricane Matthew for five years. But bottom line is, we started on 2015 at $21.35. And as of 2026, we're at $19.4. So we just recently went down and it continues to show a very good use of mills from a town perspective. And getting that in a comparison to our peers within a Buford, we've got Bluffton here, Buford, Port Royal, and Hardyville on the Buford County side. And then also our peers outside of our general area. It just is a demonstration of how low our mills are compared to our peers in the community. And once again, to look at general overall, where does it go? Excuse me. We have basically, I'm not, I didn't even touch it. There we go.
Trying to move John.
Oh, we're still doing John. Okay. So.
He's good, he's good up top.
We'll leave it be. All right, so as you can tell, our $19.4 is a very small piece of pie, I would say, with regards to how it's divided up from that perspective as well. So most of it going to the schools and to the county. Now we look into our assessed value. And this is pretty telling here from a assessed value for the town. We have grown 47% in our assessed value since 2015. And we've seen that in our property tax revenue as well. And this year, you know, $1.3 billion from its best value perspective. So significant growth from that end of it. And that then correlates to our fund balance. Our fund balance has grown 64.7% since 2021, which is, has really an ending balance of $240 million. So continued very strong performance there, leading into revenue as well, which is 39.9% growth since 2021. And this is general operating revenue for the town. And so just, we've had very strong performance over the last five years, which has kind of led us to this point today. And then the last, I'll say trend slide, is also our real estate transfer fee. And that money has been used for property acquisitions in the past, but we could use it for other fund sources as well. But we are, we ended '25 at $13.9 million. And as of the, let's see if it's on here. November 10th, we're at $16 million in that, for that balance. So rather, rather large. Okay, so now we're here talking about the potential to borrow $35 million. And why are we here? One is, I talked about before, we can only use that fund balance to pay back debt. It's grown to $14.2 million. I said 11.7 before. We do recommend keeping a $2.5 million fund balance in the debt service fund, not taking it down to zero. So that's a recommendation today. And then we are going to collect $2.6 million from the two mills that was approved for a full year fiscal year 2026 property tax collections as well. So go into the next slide here. And this is just a little recon of using the fund balance plus the collections to get to amount available to pay back, which is $14.3 million on what we decide to borrow from a bond perspective. So using, if we did do $35 million today and we would pay back $14.3 million this year, which would leave roughly $20.7 million that we would pay back over the next 15 years, basically, or 14 years. And the way the payback schedule is being recommended is, well, I'll go through that in a second. By doing this, if we did the 35 today, we still would have a large debt capacity of $37 million. So still well within the state guidelines and our council imposed guidelines from that perspective. Okay? And so we have two scenarios. Scenario one's $25 million. Scenario two is $35 million. We would have $9 million in either one for the Fire, Rescue and EOC. And then that would leave the remainder for land. And that's basically how the two models are presented here. This is just a little bit of the history of prior land acquisitions that we've done. I'm not going to go through every item here, but it's pretty remarkable the, what we have done in the past with the acres and the impact to the community from that perspective. Okay. So, and even though we're saying land, there is other projects that are out there. But, you know, the language as it's written today says land purchases, but this is just, just the information that's out there for capital projects that are being looked at today. Okay? And getting back to our scenarios, we have $25 million at 15 years or $35 million at 15 years. And that's really here, what, this first scenario, 1B, is looking at doing $25 million with a 15-year payback. You see the significant payback in 2026 with the orange. And then we do have material paybacks of $3 million each year in '27 and '28. And then it drops dramatically going forward into the out years. And we do have the Millage Collections, which is forecasted in this exercise to grow 2% a year. So we have plenty of room from a debt payback perspective in the out years. And the same thing would hold if we went up to, that's just the information for the chart, but the same thing would hold if we did $35 million. Same, same, same opportunity there. Okay, so this is the language, once again, that we started off with the memo that was discussed at the finance, the vote, the two to one vote. And with the underlying items that we were added from Michael's perspective to narrow the language even further. And that's where we are today. Oh, I want to get to the timing, excuse me. We do have to spend the money. And so this is a breakout of how that, if we did 35, the timing of how that money would be spent. So we would see that coming forward in our new budgeting process coming up here pretty soon. And from a timeframe perspective, we reviewed this at the Finance Administrative Committee meeting on the 18th. We're here today for our first reading. Hopefully, we can get through to the second reading in January and shoot for April 1st closing. It's a quick turnaround, but that's the goal right now. And so that's where we are. And there are comments here. I'm not going to go through them, but there's a lot of positive comments about the town situation right now, including how we got to the AAA status, which is great. It's hard to do.
Before I ask for a motion, I'd like to ask a question as to, really to the bond council. And Ms. Bryson, I think I'll turn it over to you to ask the question a little bit clearer than I might.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good to see you again. Last time you saw me on the screen, so maybe that was better. I don't know. But the question is about the motion that I made before the Finance Administrative Committee. And the motion was to make it broader, not narrower. And I actually was able to pull up the transcript from that meeting, if I can get my phone to come back on again. So the draft before the Finance Administrative Committee, defined in the first whereas, capital improvement plan includes several capital projects and then use it to create a fine term capital projects. And it doesn't go on to define those anywhere else that I could find in the documents. Then the proposal before us now says that the town council has been advised, town intends to acquire and renovate certain land and existing improvements, if any located at Nine Park Lane and 10 Park Lane for the new headquarters for fire and rescue and emergency operations center, and acquire land for conservation purposes. So during our discussion, the idea was, and I ask you about the language. And so we did say land for conservation purposes. Absolutely no problem there. But the capital projects, and you use the language, including but not limited to the Fire and Rescue and Emergency Operations Center. So now we've taken out that possibility of funding other capital projects. And if we can get, I'm sorry to ask you to do this, Kim, but if we go back to a couple of slides before where you showed that we have to spend money by a certain date, almost, one more. There we go. So we've got to spend at least 10% or $3.5 million by October of next year. And then at least 45% by, well, that's odd, April 1 of 2026. Should that be April?
I think that should be April 1 of '27.
Yeah, okay. So anyhow, there's a spending timeline. But we can take care of that by $9 million for Fire and Rescue. So that should take care of the October 1. But it accelerates our spending. So the idea behind the motion I made was to create a broader possibility rather than a narrower possibility. And I don't know how that got translated into what's before us today. So what I want to suggest that we consider on first reading is to go back to the language that was part of the motion, which defined capital projects. And the capital projects would include but not be limited to the fire and rescue. What do we call it? Fire rescue and emergency operations center. And land acquisition for conservation purposes. So that would change the language on first reading to make sure that it reflects that broad possibility to be able to do the spend down according to the timetable we have to do. And then we would have clear language before us on second reading.
Is that an issue?
It would require, just like the, the earlier resolution, I think it would require a motion to amend the title and the language in the, in the ordinance. The other thing that I would point out, just for full disclosure, it is true that the, the, the schedule of, of, we call them thresholds or milestones. It is true that those are, they are intended to say that if an issuer meets those thresholds, there's, they, they don't have, with a proceeds of a tax exempt bond, then they don't have to calculate rebate. Rebate, of course, is the difference between the yield of the bond and the yield of the invested proceeds of the bond. So ordinarily, there would be an obligation to compute rebate within five years after the issue, to the extent that there was a rebate payment owed, the issuer would then have an obligation to pay the Internal Revenue Service for any amount that is over the bond yield. That, of course, is dependent on investment earnings. In the past five to seven years, or at least until about two years ago, investment yields were very low. So the possibility of actually producing a rebate liability was fairly low. Fortunately, in the last couple of years, rates have come back up. So the, the likelihood of paying rebate or calculating a rebate payment is much greater. This spending threshold would say that if the issuer meets the, spending these percentages of bond proceeds within certain milestones, and it does that through the entire, through the 24-month period, there would not be an obligation to calculate and therefore not to pay rebate. To the extent that there was, that, that obligation would be satisfied by the payment of rebate. So just want to point that out. It's, this is not intended to be a, you have to spend all the money within two years with these thresholds, or else it affects the tax exempt status of the bonds. This is simply a, an exception that would allow for the town not to have to calculate rebate at all.
Which is also important.
Yes, no doubt.
All right, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consideration of an ordinance of the town of Hilton Head Island authorizing the issuance of general obligation debt bonds as written. However, I would like to change the amount from 35 million to 25 million.
And I would move to amend that motion.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. One step at a time. So first of all, Kim, do we have anybody that, that has signed up to speak on this agenda item?
Mr. Williams.
He passes.
Come on, Chad, you don't want to enter this one?
So, so now we come back and we have a quick discussion, and then you can make your motion. Or you can go ahead and make it.
Can we have the discussion?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and speak first. So as was mentioned at the finance meeting, this was approved as written with the $35 million with a vote of two to one. I was this dissenting vote. And again, I agree with this process. I agree with the $2.5 million reserve minimum, the 15 years, the borrowing of money, that it goes to the fire and rescue, emergency operations purchase, and land for conservancy purposes. It's just the amount of money that I did not agree with. And it's a philosophical decision for me versus a financial one. Your presentation clearly indicates that we have the capacity, not only from how much we can borrow in general, but also through our debt millage, which means we can borrow either amount and not be asking for any additional money from property tax owners. It fits within our current millage. So again, it becomes a philosophical decision for me. I'm always looking for the lowest amount of borrow to meet the needs of what it is that we are trying to accomplish and the quickest payback period of time. And for me as well, I'm always looking to the future. There are a lot of decisions that we are going to need to make moving forward beyond this. Things like stormwater investments that we know we need to make, the future of the town hall facility, public safety as well. And we have the opportunity to take a look at borrowing more money in 2029. When we pay off more debt, there's going to be even more cushion and the ability to potentially actually reduce millage and borrow money. What a novel concept and what a great place to be. So for me, I'd rather keep my options open, borrow $25 million versus $35 million. And so that's why I made the motion.
Good. Ms. Becker?
And that's why Melinda went first. And again, I can say, as I did at the Finance and Administrative Meeting, that I concur 100% with those comments that you just heard. But I want to add a couple of, a couple of things or ask a couple of additional questions. The way it's written currently, without any changes that might be coming forward, the monies can be used, as I requested, and I'm grateful to you all for agreeing, that the monies could be used for purchasing land for conservation. And that's a great thing. But the way it's written currently, there's no, there's no room for any previously approved CIP projects. Is that correct, the way it's written currently?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm satisfied.
Other than the
Fire and rescue.
Fire rescue and the emergency option.
Correct, which I'm satisfied with. And, and, and I think that's smart. I think that we have made approvals on projects. And when we made those approvals, there were timelines and funds associated with the timelines that would accomplish those goals. So for me, I'm not understanding why anyone would try to put into this package funds to satisfy previously approved projects. It doesn't, doesn't make quite any sense. And I'm not willing to agree to that. The thing that I do want to ask is, and Melinda alluded to it, what does this do to, we've spoken, we've just had the opportunity to reduce millage. And I think that was the appropriate thing to do anywhere and anytime that we can for our residents. And we had talked about the possibility of an additional two mills in the future. What does this, that we're considering today? How does that impact that ability to think through the two mills reduced, reduction in the near future?
So the, the debt service on, on all of the town's debt bonds, including this bond issue, is set, of course, there's a schedule for all the outstanding debt, and the debt service for this bond issue will be set when these bonds are sold. Assuming that the, that the town transfers money from the debt service fund to pay down that significant principal payment, we've assumed, or the numbers that have been run have assumed June 1 of next year. When the town is then going through its budget process next June, it would set debt service millage at a level that is sufficient to pay debt service for the following year. Does that annually, right? So the projections, the, the table that you saw that has the gold bar that's going, or the gold line that's going up, that assumes a 2% increase in assessed value. If assessed value goes higher than that, then to the extent there's, you know, there's an opportunity that council could make to set millage equal to the amount of outstanding debt or according to a future borrowing or whatnot. But that would be an annual decision.
Thank you for those answers, and that's where my questions.
Okay. Mr. Alfred?
I'd like to speak in opposition to that motion. From my point of view, the conservative position is the opposite. It's to borrow rather and conserve your cash. And the reason for that is, you don't know what's coming down the pipe. We are just finishing or in the process of working on beach re-nourishment at a very large dollar cost. There's nothing that says that next year we aren't going to have a bad storm that destroys everything done this year, and we need to do it over again. And that same bad storm could cause some problems with tax revenues on the island by destruction of events. So that the, our very top AAA rating that we have now, with a low interest cost of borrowing that goes with it, can't be guaranteed to exist if we have a catastrophe that requires the large expenditure of money. And borrowing under those circumstances may be pushing things uphill, may be difficult. If we borrow the money, we have more cash available to deal with contingencies, with different types of problems or exigencies that could occur that we can't predict. The other side of that, and the benefit of the other side is we invest the money that we keep in cash. We, we are earning something in excess, if I recall correctly, $10 million a year in interest earnings. If, if we spend the cash, we don't earn all that money. So there are a number of reasons why the more conservative and safe position is to borrow more money rather than less. And while we don't have to decide the exact amount today, we are simply setting the upper limit. I strongly favor keeping the upper limit at 35.
Bryson?
I'd like to agree with Mr. Agreeable and his analysis with regard to the, to the amount. And as he points out, also having the broader authority that I previously discussed would give us those options of what kind of, how we need to address certain things that might happen in the future. The other thing that has been mentioned, I agree with Ms. Turner about the $2.5 million reserve to increase that or to establish that. And that's not a part of this action, but as I understand it, that would be a part of our consideration in our FY 2027 budget. So we don't want to lose, lose track of that. The other thing I wanted to ask about is, in addition to the ordinance that was considered by the Finance Administrative Committee, there was a reimbursement resolution to reimburse ourselves because we're probably going to close on the property for fire and rescue. I'll just say fire and rescue before this bond issue closes. So will we have that at second reading? Is that the intention? That's why it's not on today's agenda?
That's scheduled on the January 12th meeting.
Okay, great. Just wanted to follow up on that one. The other question, I guess, is for the town manager and maybe the finance director. And, and sorry, Kim, can you scroll a couple of pages back to the list of shovel-ready projects? Did I have you go in the right direction? Maybe. I'm sorry, maybe I had you go the wrong way. You say it's 22? Okay. I'm just testing.
Page 22, Kim.
Yeah. You were going the right way. I'm the one that's confused. There we go. Okay. So if the broad language is not included in this ordinance, what happens to my pickleball people and the $10 million bucks? You know, where do we get that money from to do that project, which is within our CIP? And then the other one I wanted to ask about in particular is historic Mitchellville Freedom Park, because we have a commitment there to do work to help out with that project of 2.3 million. So where do we get those funds from?
Well, you're, you're going to decide in, in your, in your budget cycle, right? In the FY 27 budget preparation, where we'll kick off in January, talk a lot, and then I bring that forward in, in May and June. So ultimately, pickleball and/or Mitchellville Freedom Park, or, and/or, or anything you see on this screen, and then some, will be decided by you during the budget discussion. So I can't sit here today as your town manager and, and commit that those, those funds are available if other council members would like other projects funded. I would tell you that this is a good source to fund those projects, or some of them. But we also have many other sources of revenue. I will propose a budget to you. From, from what I understand, I will propose a budget to you for pickleball. It's approximately a $9 million to $10 million project with that contingency in there. It includes 18 pickleball courts. It includes a building. We will have by the time, well, before too much longer, we will have all of our permits in place, including building, federal and state wetland permits, so on, so forth. So we call it shovel-ready, but you have to fund it. We were planning on bringing that forward, debt or not, as a funded, 100% funded project proposal in the FY 27 budget. I am not able to bring all of those projects completely funded. But those two are your already existing priorities. They're in the design phase with the understanding last budget year that we would bring them forward to you for construction dollars in the FY 27 budget. So it's a long answer, and I'm trying to dance around the fact that you all make that decision in the budget process.
Okay. So in order to even consider funding these, something from this list or other lists, we would need broader language to consider the bond issue for that funding. To consider it. I'm just asking, what if that's one of the sources? And then in addition, is my recollection for land acquisition, that we have used the real estate transfer fee. And, and we have still a substantial real estate transfer fee for use for land acquisition, is my understanding? 16 million? Okay, all right. So I, I just wanted to get some more information out on the table for our discussion about the amount and the language. And I, I agree with Mr. Alfred. I prefer the 35 million with broader flexibility and a 15-year payback. Because I, as I understand it, the numbers work. 15-year payback on 35 million, and we don't need to go to the longer term. The numbers work either way.
Yeah, and I just would like to follow up on Councilman Bryson's conversation about shovel-ready projects. I'm also a believer in paying for the CIP programs through our current funds. We collect plenty of money. We've got great reserves. It was a long answer, but I heard the town manager say that there, although we have to vote on it through our budget, there is money to pay for things like the pickleball and Mitchellville Freedom Park. And so again, I'm not, I get uncomfortable, and that's another reason why I don't like the larger amount, is we start expanding the scope as to how we're going to be using the money. And I believe that we should have a much narrower scope that's fully defined, rather than starting to add additional projects that can be used for this bond fund.
Mayor?
What?
That's correct. And in addition to that, and I know that you're basing your comments, Melinda, councilwoman, on community input, as we all do. But I can say that the community input that I've heard is that we should pay for what we have in moving forward. And these projects in particular, as we approve them, there was a funding strategy that had been laid out and confirmed tonight that the monies should be able to come in. And with regard even to the extent that the fire and rescue, we do have $16 million that could pay for that if we wanted to spend that money in that regard, and quite honestly, and I think when we approved it, that's what the thought was. So I hear the logic of what's being discussed between the other two council members. However, I think that it is in the best interest and consistent with town sentiment, resident sentiment, that we pay for the CIP projects through our ongoing revenue that comes into the town, that we absolutely prioritize buying land for conservation in keeping with our strategic plan priority number one, which is to control the growth of this town. And no better way to do it than that. And so therefore, I could add a lot of additional comments, but I think my position is, is pretty clear that the $25,000 to, to accomplish a number of things that have been put before us in prioritizing conservation is the way that we should be moving this forward. And that is consistent with the resident sentiment that I've heard.
Other comments from council? Any other motions from council?
Ms. Mayor, I move to amend the motion on the floor to provide that the issuance of sale of not to exceed $35 million. And to change the language where it says fund the acquisition renovation of certain land and existing improvement. the acquisition renovation of certain land and existing improvements, if any, located at Nine Park Lane and 10 Park Lane for the new headquarters and for fire and rescue operations." That particular section be changed to say, "Fund capital projects, including but not limited to the acquisition and renovation of certain land and existing improvements, if any located at Nine Park Lane and 10 Park Lane for the new headquarters for fire and rescue and emergency operations." Keep the remaining language. In addition, to change the language in the first whereas in the same way, and to make the motion shorter, to provide for capital projects instead of the word projects, including but not limited to the language that has to do with fire, rescue, and emergency operations center, and acquire land for conservation purposes.
A second. Any other discussion from council? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so I'm going to be supporting the 35 million with the shorter pay period and also with the language around including the capital improvements. Just a little historical context here, and I give kudos to Mr. Orlando. We started to see some improvements around our island because he was able to tap into additional revenue sources that had accumulated some fund balances over the years, okay? And we've also gotten to a point per hour discussion at Finance Administrative Committee meeting today, we're starting to see a much better burn when it comes to our capital improvements, okay? We were sort of slow getting out of the gate for a while there, but now we're sort of caught up and we're getting these projects not only approved in the budgetary cycle, but actually shovels in the ground and we're spending money, okay? And definitely we want to continue to keep our place nice, bright, and shiny. And us having more flexibility to do so, I think, is important. Obviously, the numbers that are in front of us for some of these proposed 2027 shovel-ready projects, they're just numbers on paper. Who knows what it's going to look like when we really get into construction, right? You may have overruns, and I'd hate for us to get in a position where we are being political about projects within our community. You know, we are not in a position where we are desperate or in need of, you know, referendums and that sort of thing to get things done. A lot of communities have to do that in order to reinvest. We do not. So giving us some flexibility there, I think, is important. And also the land acquisition piece. The real estate transfer fee, at least in my mind, needs to be available if the town wants to get into economic development. We've got pieces of property now that are being considered for things that we need on Hilton Head, and they were purchased and in the future could be purchased with real estate transfer fees, so we get the flexibility. So the 16 million that's there, I like the fact that it's 16 million, but I'm also being conscious that we need to be careful as to how we move with that money. Also, we were blessed that the electorate decided that we should tax ourselves through a referendum to purchase land. Town of Hilton Head has been very aggressive in that. That money is now running short. I think we've now sort of created a mindset, we've created momentum, the public is looking for us to take land off of the table so that it's not developed. And with this particular item, if there's more monies available to do that, and there's preservation clause in there, which I agree with 100%, I think that gives us that flexibility. So with all of that, I think we're doing the community a great service by borrowing, particularly when we're not asking for any additional tax dollars. We're well within our capacity to do so. So again, those are my reasons for supporting the higher amount of 35 million.
Okay, other comments, discussion? All right, so we've got a motion to amend by Ms. Bryson, second by Mr. Desmond, for 35 million, 15 years for geo-debt financing with the language that Mrs. Bryson included, since I don't have that completely written down. If you want to read that real quick.
Is there a way to simplify that motion just a little bit?
I know we have the town attorney and our bond counsel here. I'm sorry.
I apologize. I'll try to make it simple, but I know we have our town attorney and our bond counsel here who can help put the exact language the way it should be done in this ordinance. So the amendment would be to strike the language in the title, which limits the capital projects to the fire and rescue center, and includes capital projects and would say, "Fund capital projects, including but not limited to the fire and rescue emergency operations center," but keeps the language and land acquisition calls for conservation purposes. So that changes the title, and we would make similar changes to the first whereas, say, "Capital projects, including but not limited to fire, rescue, and emergency operations center, and acquire land for conservation purposes." So you'd make the same change in the title and in the first whereas, creating broader authority.
I see bond counsel concurring with that. So I'm just putting it on the record. So Kim, you got that? Good enough? Okay, thank you. So all in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? That is five to two. Next, we will move on to the original motion from Ms. Turner and second by Ms. Becker for the same geo-debt financing, 25 million for 15 years.
Mayor, wouldn't that, I'm looking at the town attorney, wouldn't that be the amended one?
The amended.
Now you're voting on the main motion as amended.
As amended, yes, I'm sorry. That's correct. As amended, the main motion as amended, which is now 35 million for 15 years. All those in favor, please signify by--
May I ask a quick question? Was it 35 million or up to 35 million? Because I've heard both.
Up to 35 million.
Up to. So can we make sure that that's clear in the language?
Up to 35 million.
Yeah, not to exceed 35 million.
Yeah, not to exceed. Okay. With the language that was just adopted, all those in favor of that signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Passes five to two. Okay. Next on the list is consideration of a resolution authorizing, thank you all so very much, the public dedication acceptance of the private road rights of way for Song Sparrow Lane, Phoebe Lane, Goldfinch Lane from Cedar Woods Owners Association, Inc. The Community Development and Public Services Committee met on November 17th and voted three oh to forward the item to town council for review and consideration for approval with an indication this is not to be a precedent of any kind. Jeff Nutzinger, Engineering Public Projects Director, thank you for being here. Cheers.
Good evening. I was hoping to say good afternoon, but good evening.
We're getting there.
Mayor, town council, town manager. So the background on this is that the town received a letter from the Cedar Woods Owners Association on July 23rd of 2025 requesting that the town consider acceptance and conveyance of three private roads in their community, Cedar Woods, consisting of Song Sparrow Lane, Phoebe Lane, and Goldfinch Lane, and the drainage system associated with the The justification in the request cited in the letter included excessive ongoing maintenance costs incurred by the association exceeding the logistical and financial capacity of the neighborhood. Let me move this down as I go. The neighborhood is a limited community of 50 homes, and our experience along a stress trying to take care of their roads from a financial standpoint. They also went on to point out that in 2001 or thereabouts, the town did accept roads adjacent to the community, including Bob White Lane and Kingburn Lane, known as Point Comfort Woods. So these two were adjacent communities off of Point Comfort Road. Following this, this was considered by the Community Development and Public Safety Committee for consideration on October 20th, 2025. The committee voted to table the item and reschedule, asking that Cedar Woods be asked to have representation come to the following meeting to represent the community on this request, and also requesting that we look into the possibility of Cedar Woods having any capital funds to donate in exchange for the town's consideration of acceptance to the roads. Went back to the committee on November 17th, and after some discussion, also with the Cedar Woods Board President answering some of the questions, voted unanimously three to zero to bring it to full council for consideration.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'm on.
Alfred, Becker. Kim, has anybody signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, sir. Leslie Ford.
Come on up, Ms. Ford.
Thank you very much. Leslie Ford, president of Cedar Woods. So really, the reason we're in this predicament is because of the Seapines bankruptcy. Seapines developed Cedar Woods. We're a small, working-class community of 50 homes, and we just don't have the capacity. I mean, you guys are so lucky. You've got engineers and attorneys and just really smart folks on the town that can be a big help to us, and that's what we're asking for. We're a volunteer board. I don't get paid. And taking on roads and drainage, to me, is just a government thing. It's just outside of our expertise. So we are asking for your help. When Seapines went bankrupt, our roads ended up in research property holdings bag of tricks, and they all got sold off in bits and pieces. At the time, for some reason, our sister community came to the town, and the town took their roads. Great. We pay the same taxes as they do, by the way. Unfortunately, I was not in the community at the time, and when they approached our community, our community decided to pay Frank Guccio for the roads. Really dumb idea, in my opinion. We don't have the capacity to maintain roads. He should have, we should have said, "No, we can't take the roads." And then Frank Guccio would have had to either find the state or the county or the town to take them. Should have happened 30 years ago, didn't. We're here today to ask for that, and we thank you very much. Questions?
Mr. Williams?
He passes?
That's all we have.
That's all? Back to the dais, any, Mr. Alfred?
I just wanted to reiterate that in the prior discussions, it is understood that the town needs to develop a plan and guidelines for when it will assume control of private roads and agree to pay to maintain them. The concern is that a private association can keep their dues level at a very modest lower level and let the roads crumble. And we do not want to take a position that would encourage that in any way. So the plan isn't developed, it isn't ready yet, so we are going forward with this situation and approve it now. But the intention is that we will come up with guidelines for the circumstances under which the town will assume control of private roads.
Ms. Turner?
Yes. I agree with Councilman Alfred's concern about not having a policy. I am concerned about that as well, and so I would prefer to table this until we have a policy. I'm supportive, I understand the position that you're in, but I would like to have a clear policy so that we are not setting a precedent, we don't get a wave of requests, inconsistencies, and how we deny some and approve others and future obligations. So to me, it's just a timing-related issue. Again, I'm a policy person. I think I've made that clear in the past, and I would just feel more comfortable with a policy before making this decision. Thank you.
Other comments?
Me?
Ms. Becker? I wasn't sure if you were saying no or--
Oh, no, no, I do. Well, to that point, I believe that, and y'all can correct me, I think I've said it three times now, but we did have a discussion, and when the recommendation was made that these, by the staff, after their evaluation, that these roads were in fine position, condition, to be taken over by the town. We did not step into this thinking that we were going to be taking roads that were dilapidated and uncared for. That conversation did happen, and it was, it was related to us that staff's determination was that these roads were in fine position. I don't think, at this rate, we are, we should be tabling this again. These folks have been waiting for a long time for us to get to where we are here today. We have had that conversation and that confirmation, and so I feel satisfied with that and ready to take over the roads and to take the next step that will come to helping them out. They're right, they do pay the same taxes as the rest of us.
Ms. Bryson?
Yes. First of all, I've long been an advocate for some sort of island-wide cooperative stormwater system, and this fits within there. They've certainly had issues that we need to help out with. While I agree that it would be good to have some sort of policy with exceptions in there in certain cases, which is going to take a little bit of time to develop, but I do believe we need to move forward with this. Based on the staff's recommendation, the community's consideration, I'm in support of this resolution.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'll be supporting it as well. I just want to caution us a bit about creating a policy around this particular topic. And I'll just reflect a little bit. We took over Main Street, and those roads were bad, and it was very complicated to get those roads within our ownership, but at the end of the day, it was a public safety decision. And I think that should, you know, be one of our guiding principles when it comes to this discussion, and also the infrastructure when it comes to stormwater that comes along with a lot of the roadways. So I know it's a little uncomfortable when we have to make a decision when folks are approaching us, but I think that we are leaning on the professionals at the staff level when it comes to our engineers, that we can come to qualified decisions as far as what we take and what we don't take. So I just want to put that out there, but again, I'll be supporting this this evening.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we've got a consideration of a resolution authorizing the public dedication and acceptance of the private road rights of way for Song Sparrow Lane, Phoebe Lane, and Goldfinch Lane from Cedar Woods Owners Association. Motion was made by Mr. Alfred, second by Ms. Becker. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Six to one. Passes six to one. Finally, and finally, under new business, we have consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of a standardized stormwater agreement for the Cedar Woods subdivision. The Community Development and Public Services Committee met on November 17th and voted three to zero to forward this item to town council for review and consideration. Jeff, you're up again. May I move for approval?
Senator.
Kim, has anybody signed up to speak on this item?
I have Ms. Ford.
Okay.
And also Mr. Williams.
He passes. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, we have a consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of a standardized stormwater agreement for the Cedar Woods subdivision. Motion made by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Becker. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seven zero. Now, moving on to non-intended items, public comment, section 2-5-70 of the Town's Code limits each person to one three-minute comment when addressing council. At the end of your three minutes, you are asked to conclude your comments. Please maintain a decorum suitable for the meeting and refrain from using any profane, abusive, or obscene language. If you have any materials you would like to give to town council, please give them to the town clerk after you're finished speaking. Kim, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Mr. Williams.
He passes?
Dave Ferguson.
I don't see Mr. Ferguson.
Mr. Busy. And also, while you're walking up, I've got Mr. Richard Busy and Mayor Deckard signed up for public comment after executive session. I don't know if--
No.
No? Okay.
Good evening. Richard Busy, Endo Go Run. Now that the '26 reelection or election cycle is underway following the mayor's announcement to seek reelection, one word will dominate: transparency. We'll hear it from the mayor, we'll hear it from every council member seeking reelection, and any candidate running for the council. But let's be honest, transparency is often promised, rarely practiced. Too often, it feels like an illusion. Too often, it feels like an illusion. Take a phrase we hear frequently from the dais, particularly from Councilman Alex Brown. "We need to have a conversation." Yet if those conversations happen, the public, the people you serve, never hear them. Consider tonight, you'll discuss the town's destination marketing organization in executive session. Legal? Yes. Transparent? No. Will the Hilton Head Chamber get the nod again? Who else submitted proposals to manage millions of dollars to entice tourists to come to Hilton Head? If the chamber has chosen, why? We'll likely never know. This is the fourth time this DMO has been discussed behind closed doors. Why all the secrecy? You'll also discuss the Land Management Ordinance Task Force again in executive session. This is the third time. If it takes this long to appoint a task force, how long will it take to produce a new ordinance? Legal? Yes, I guess. Transparent? No. And recently, the town manager's contract was extended to 2031. Salary increased 4% and a $25,000 bonus awarded. I understand personnel matters belong in executive session. But when you returned, the motion passed six-nothing with no discussion other than a attaboy from the mayor. Now, perhaps Mr. Orlando was doing a great job, but the public deserves to hear your reasoning for your unanimous decision. Transparency. Words matter, but actions matter more. And I hope that every candidate will do more than talk about transparency. I hope you will practice it. True clarity. After all, transparency means clarity, like Caribbean waters, where you can see 30 feet below the surface. That's the clarity our community deserves. Truth is worth speaking, even when the world refuses to listen, or in this case, the Town Council. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Missy.
Ms. Deckard.
Ms. Deckard? Either one.
Good evening. Thank you for having me speak again. I just wanted to follow up on the deceptive hotel fees that we talked about at my last appearance and the matching SEPT grants. And for the record, these fees are charged by participating hotels in the state, and those monies go to the respective DMOS in their location. So I'm talking about the fees that go to the Hilton Head Chamber tonight. The Chamber replied in an article to the Island Packet after I spoke to y'all about these fees, saying they were optional and the hotels didn't have any preferred benefits from the program. So my thoughts on that are, one, no hotel is going to participate in a lodging fee program without getting a benefit. Otherwise, why would they do it? So ask yourself what these hotels are getting every time an unsuspecting guest pays that fee, and then they pass that money along to the Chamber, who then applies for matching grants to the state with those fees and other revenues that they raise. Your average guest doesn't know these fees are optional, so I call baloney on the Chamber, saying a guest just has to ask the hotel to take it off the bill. How would they know to do that if they don't have any idea it's optional? Should they just bring the Island Packet article with them every time they check into a hotel? Something I don't think you've taken into account are that hotels charging these fees cost the town in lost revenue. The reason for that is these fees should be part of the advertised rate, the hotel room, and be taxed at the occupancy tax rate. But these fees are taxed at the lesser sales tax rate. So that's a tax loss on every room in town that's charging these fees. So if you're looking for extra money for affordable housing initiatives, better infrastructure for the town, or maybe like Mr. Brown mentioned earlier, money for Palmetto Breeze, maybe that's where you should look for some of that missing money. The town gives the Chamber millions yearly for tourism promotion. I think it's 15 million or so, while the tourism numbers stay relatively the same, which is about 2.7 million. But now that you know the Chamber gets millions more every year in matching grants from these fees and privately raised revenue, why aren't you getting more tourists and more hotel revenues? They also claim they aren't subject to FOIA, but when they apply for these millions of dollars in matching grants from the state, they agree to be subject to FOIA. Isn't that like being a little bit pregnant? The Chamber is not the be-all, end-all for generating tourism. In fact, I believe tourism is the byproduct of their business activities. So if you take the function in-house, like the town of Folly Beach did when they got rid of their DMO, you'll not only save millions of dollars, you'll also be able to direct the ATAX money where it's most needed and track every penny. Because to date, you didn't even know about these destination fees and other monies.
Thank you, Ms. Deckard. Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have. Okay. Thank you all. Mr. Orlando, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, sir. As shown on the agenda, items 11A, B, C, and D.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'm on.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We're in executive session.
Executive session. Kim, are you still ready for us?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Brown, do we have any actions coming out of executive session?
Uh, yes, sir, we do. I yield to Ms. Beck on the first one, though.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, I'd like to, um, announce the appointments to various boards and commissions, committees, um, as... Yeah. Yes. Um, and then we'll take a vote on that. I was getting there. Um, to the Beaufort County airports board, um, as the Hilton Head Island representative with a term ending 6/30/2028, Dr. Eli Roth has been recommended. To the Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust, Hilton Head Island representative with a term ending, uh, to be decided, Carl Brundell. Board of zoning appeals, who's our architect, sitting in the architect's seat with a term ending 6/30/2028, Dell Stricker. Stricker. Um, housing action committee, Barbara Ben... And I'm gonna need help. Ben Azinski, thank you. With a term ending 6/30/2026. Housing action committee, um, with a term ending 6/30/2026, Sue Ann Hess. Housing action committee, a term ending 6/30/2026, Marion O'Brien. Housing action committee, term ending 6/30/2027, Molly Risk. Housing action committee, term ending 6/30/2027, Justin Wilson. Housing action committee, term ending 6/30/2027, Greg Nguyen. And I need a motion to, um... Right? You need a motion? That was the motion, I'm sorry. A second to the motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the motions? Any other comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved 7-0.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint the following, uh, citizens to the land management ordinance task force, Tom Hens, planning commission, Judd Carstens, design review board, Louis Johnson, Gulliguchi Historic Neighborhoods Community Development Corporation, Levon Stevens, Gulliguchi Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force, Ray Warko, Hilton Head Chamber of Commerce, Eck Brim, uh, representing Hilton Head Area Home Builders Association, James Wedgworth, Hilton Head Area Realtors, Mike Alsco, uh, short-term rental industry, Cliff McMackin, hospitality industry, Barbara Benazinski, uh, workforce housing sector, Bill Dix, uh, Pamela Doons, Courtney Struna, Pamela Hall, Peter Christian, Hilton Head Plantation, uh, and residents at large, Brian Gennard, Lola Campbell, Greg Russell, Edwina Dunlap, and Seren Storin. And the ex-official members would be town manager Mark Orlando and deputy town manager Sean Lineker.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved 7-0.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm looking at the town manager. Do we need to say anything about any upcoming dates regarding the task force?
We're gonna do that on Wednesday.
Thank you.
What the chair said.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that the town council authorize the mayor and town manager be authorized to execute and deliver the proposed contract by and between the town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, and Hilton Head Medical Center LLC for the sale of 4.57 acres of town-owned property on Main Street, and it takes such other and further actions as may be necessary to complete the transaction described in the contract.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a first and second. Mr. Brown, it's a factor for the sale of what you just said. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved 7-0. Long day.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, authorizing the sale of three parcels of real property owned by the town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, located at 55 Main Street, one automobile place, and 355 William Hilton Parkway, and providing severability and an effective date.
Second.
Second is Bryson. First and second on the sale of three parcels at 55 Main Street. Any discussion? All but discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. So moved 7-0.
Sorry, Mayor, I wasn't quite... Fast enough on the discussion. This is the first reading of sale of property, so it will require a second reading, which I understand will happen in January, and perhaps at that time we can provide more information to the public.
Yes. Good. Mr. Brown, is there anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Motion to adjourn?
No move.
We adjourn. Thank you all. Merry Christmas.